is walking. The theme, in spite of our differences, we are not all that different. Looks like this festival may be on a path to turning out some of L.A.'s future filmmakers. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. This Week.
More than a dozen awards were handed out for documentaries, PSAs, live-action, and animated films at various grade levels. It's one of L.A.'s biggest and most exotic weekend parties, and it's free. The 38th Annual Lotus Festival is set to attract tens of thousands of visitors, and organizers want to give you a taste of what's to come. Anna Margos shows us which country is hosting the event at Echo Park this year.
You'd swear you were in China if it wasn't for the L.A. skyline in the background. The Lotus Festival press luncheon with its dragon red themes is just a sneak preview of what's in store. Come July 14th and 15th, Echo Park will be transformed as the 38th Annual Lotus Festival kicks off.
The lake and the entire park environment is going to be alive with culture and art and fun and music and the paddleboat races.
The festival celebrates the diversity of Asian and Pacific Islander culture, and each year, a different country plays host. This year, it's China.
Chinese community has contributed to the prosperity, diversity, and vitality of this great city of Los Angeles.
And Councilmember David Ruh promises it will feature plenty of drama.
You can see all the red backdrop and the dragons and the dragon boat racing we are all going to participate in.
We're not sure whom he means by "all," but it appears Councilmember David Ruh himself will be among the intrepid dragon boat racers. But if boat races aren't your thing and you want a more mellow pastime, there's a new thing this year: a wine garden. And then there's all those lotuses to watch and new people to meet.
Without the parks, the public, you know, has no way of, you know, getting out and meeting their neighbors and coming out to... What is a free event for a weekend, which is a beautiful, cultural, you know, a lot of diversity event?
You can start in on the fun a day early. Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell plans to throw a huge opening party at Echo Park at 6:00 P.M. on Friday, July 13th. Yep, Friday the 13th, but fear not. Think of all the fun as 100,000 people from all walks of life converge on the park for a little Lotus Fun. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. This Week.
The Lotus Festival will be open from noon to 9:00 P.M. on both Saturday, July 14th, and Sunday, July 15th at Echo Park. Well, it's a way to build healthier communities and give kids some safe summer fun. We're talking about the L.A. Department of Rec and Parks' Operation Splash, which just hit the pools this summer. Anna Margos takes us to one opening party at a city pool in Gassell Park.
Operation Splash has just made its splashy entrance at pools throughout L.A. with the help of these elegant synchronized swimmers from the Department of Recreation and Parks' own swim teams.
It's helped me with my flexibility and my strength and courage.
Operation Splash is a free summer program that teaches kids in L.A.'s low-income neighborhoods how to swim, have fun in the water, and stay safe.
I grew up a little bit around nine and 10. I started taking my first swim lessons at Expo Center. That was pretty fun. I really liked that pool. Growing up in South L.A., not too many people knew how to swim, especially in my area.
Thank you for supporting a program that allows all kids, no matter where they live, to have the opportunity to learn how to swim.
And I can definitely see the quality of life improving around our parks, and I hope the public sees it, and I hope that you enjoy all of our pools.
How about that? And for most of these girls, it all started with Operation Splash. The program hopes to give at least 36,000 kids swim lessons this summer. That's a lot of swimming.
I was afraid to do anything at all, really.
In water?
Yes. After the swim lessons, I thought maybe, hey, I could do it, you know?
It helps me survive, like, if there's a flood.
It helps me, like, keep my body in shape.
The program has partnered with Kaiser Permanente and the L.A. 84 Foundation to get even more swim lessons out to the kids.
It saves lives not just through water safety, though. We save lives through getting people active, right? Heart health, losing weight, being more active.
After 13 years of summer fun, its former students are now synchronized swimmers, athletes, lifeguards, and who knows, maybe even a future Olympian or two.
The Olympics are coming back to Los Angeles in 10 short years, but those children that are 10 years old, that are eight years old, that are learning to swim now, they're going to be at the prime age that they can chase that Olympic dream.
As if there weren't already enough reasons to make a big splash in the pool this summer. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. This Week.
You can sign up for Operation Splash at SwimLA.org. New improvements on the I-110/405 interchange are getting underway. The LAPD and the LGBTQ community get together for a special evening, and Metro is one step closer to connecting all of its rail lines. All these stories in City View. Mayor Eric Garcetti gave remarks at the groundbreaking celebration of the I-110/405 interchange improvement project. Garcetti said that L.A. County will grow by half a million people over the next decade and that the city needs to be prepared.
The improvements we're making are going to ensure that the demand that we have here, existing demand, is handled better and that we're better positioned for the future as well.
The LAPD and the LGBTQ community recently came together for the fourth annual LGBTQ Community Mixer at Police Headquarters. The purpose of the event is to unite leaders in the LGBTQ community with leaders at LAPD who are helping build bridges to make sure the department is serving and protecting our LGBT friends and loved ones.
LGBTQ officers 10 years ago could only dream of an event like this.
Metro held a community event at the Japanese-American National Museum Plaza to celebrate construction progress on the Regional Connector Transit Project. The event featured live entertainment, art workshops, and family activities.
The future of Los Angeles is about rail, it's about public transportation as we continue to grow.
Angelenos with no medical insurance took advantage of free health screenings for a day, while those with coverage were able to avoid long lines at the clinic. Gil Reyes takes us to a senior health fair sponsored by the city.
Use it or lose it, good advice for seniors on the importance of staying active and working those muscles in the golden years. At this health fair in Watts, older adults also took advantage of a number of free screenings, like blood pressure and thyroid testing, also mammograms.
I lost my Kaiser benefits a couple of weeks ago, so this way I'm able to get some eye exam for new glasses, and also I'm going to take the mammogram because it's so important that when you don't have benefits, to take advantage of services like this.
The fair coincided with National Senior Health and Fitness Day and hosted by the L.A. City Department of Recreation and Parks.
You don't need to make an appointment. There's no long lines.
Leslie Richter from Rec and Parks urges people to take advantage of these rare, city-backed checkups. She also did.
They found a six-millimeter cyst on my thyroid, on my right side, and they were very clear that I should reach out to my physician and so that we could just keep an eye on it. So I thought that was really helpful because who knew?
Senior healthcare provider Humana sponsored the event. Sponsors make events possible, and more are needed to keep free, speedy, possibly lifesaving services going in your area.
And so the call goes out for other healthcare providers and big businesses to sponsor future events such as this one. You can call Leslie Richter from the Department of Recreation and Parks. That's the number at the bottom of your screen, 213-485-7512. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
There are no more city-sponsored health fairs planned for any time soon, but organizations can change that by sponsoring the event. Cheer on the athletes or volunteer to help out at the Angel City Games. Watch a movie under the stars at Griffith Park, or check out the biggest carnival and culture festival in L.A. All this and this week's things to do. The City of Los Angeles Department on Disability is cosponsoring the 2018 Angel City Games. The games feature clinics and competitions in track and field, wheelchair basketball, wheelchair tennis, swimming, and archery. Angel City Games takes place June 21st through the 24th at UCLA. Complete event information can be found at AngelCityGames.org. Bring a picnic blanket and head over to the Archery South Lawn to watch the movie Clerks projected onto the largest outdoor movie screen on the West Coast. The fun begins at 5:30 on Saturday, June 23rd. The archery in Griffith Park is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. As space is limited, reservations are recommended. For more, visit EatSeeHere.com. The Los Angeles Culture Festival and Hollywood Carnival are proud to present the annual Los Angeles Culture Festival. Hollywood Boulevard will transform into a grand carnival and street extravaganza. The fun takes place Saturday, June 23rd between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. at Hollywood Boulevard and Normandy in Las Feliz. For more info, visit HollywoodCarnival.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
Hi, I'm Kev from Chatsworth. Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. If you would please take your seats. Today is Friday, June 22nd. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, but before... In fact, I'll ask you to call the roll first.
Lumlinville, Bonn, and Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harastos, and Weesar, Corretts, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruh, Wesson. Eleven members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would like to ask every member in these chambers... I would like to ask every member in these chambers to rise for a moment of silence for a great man who spent the majority of his adult life serving the city that, serving the city that he loved. And ladies and gentlemen, that is the, the great John Mack. So if you could join me in a moment of silence, beginning now. And if you could just remain standing just for a moment. We on this council found out last night that John Mack had passed away. There is no way, in such a short period of time, that this council could properly honor him in just a matter of a few hours. So, to the members that are here today, we will find a day next week where we will adjourn only in his memory. I want to afford all of you the opportunity to reflect back on his many accomplishments and the things that he did to help us in this city, so that we adjourn, when we adjourn, that you, if you choose to, would be prepared to honor a man who definitely deserves being honored. The only thing that I will say about him on this day is that not only was he my friend and my neighbor, we were fraternity brothers. Our fraternity is Alpha Phi Alpha. What the mission of that fraternity is, is to create leaders, to create individuals that would use all of their skill and all of their knowledge to be public servants. And we, in the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, are unbelievably proud because John Mack, John Mack set the bar. So I appreciate the silence, I appreciate everybody rising, and again, let me make it crystal clear, that next week, we will select a council day, and he will be the only adjourning motion that we will do on that, that very day. So today, we say so long to a man, life well-lived, and we want to just thank him and his family for all of the accomplishments and all of the good things that he did for the greatest city on the planet, and that's John Mack. You could all, please, take your seats. Madam Clerk, if we could go through the, the agenda.
Approval of the minutes?
Martinez moves, Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezar moves, Bonin seconds, that brings us where?
Mr. President, items one through three are items noticed for a public hearing, and sir, there are cards on all three.
Okay, continue.
Items four through fifteen are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's, Ms. Martinez?
I'd like to call item seven special.
Let's hold seven. Let's prepare to vote for the remaining items. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Please contin, uh, Mr. Bloomingfield.
I'd like to request item fifteen to go forthwith, please.
So ordered. Continue.
Mr. President, in addition to fifteen, there is also a request to have items six, eight, and nine go forthwith.
Okay, let's incorporate them as well, so those items will go forthwith. Continue.
Items sixteen through nineteen are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Thank you, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on sixteen through nineteen, sir.
Okay, well, let's continue, or what's?
Items twenty through twenty-two are closed session items. Would you like to hold them on the desk, sir?
Let's hold them for now until I check with the city attorney's office. Please continue.
And that brings council to items called special, presentations, public comment, or special meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonin, you want to start us off today with our presentations? Then the floor belongs to Mr. Bonin.
Uh, was sir, come on up and bring the crowd. Come on, whole group. Thank you, Mr. President, for giving us the opportunity to do this presentation this morning. You know, a lot of times in this chamber, there's a lot of friendly banter back and forth between the USC crowd and the UCLA crowd, about which one is better, and it's always fun for me to watch, to see the, the two schools competing, to see what is the second-best university in Los Angeles. I'm here today with the first, representatives of Loyola Marymount University, LMU, in Westchester, right near the airport in my district. And today, we are celebrating the very long and storied career of someone who has been connected to LMU for about forty years. He is leaving us to become the provost at Seattle University, and we wanted to salute him because of all of the incredible work that, that he has done. His name is Shane Martin, he's the shy and humble guy right here.
Let's give Shane a round of applause. Mr. Martin.
White hair, blue shirt, he's almost got the memo except for the necktie. So Shane's connection to LMU, as I said, goes back more than forty years. He arrived at LMU in 1976 as an undergraduate, and then he came back in 1992 as a counselor in the residence halls while completing his doctoral studies. In 1995, he became a full-time member of the faculty, and he was named in 2005 Dean of the School of Education, and then Dean of the School of Graduate Studies in 2012. During his tenure, the School of Education experienced an unprecedented rise in the U.S. News and World Report Best Graduate Schools of Education rankings. It underwent a successful reaccreditation and launched and expanded the Doctorate of Education in Educational Leadership for Social Justice program. Under his leadership, the School of Education graduate school enrollment increased by over sixty percent to approximately fifteen hundred students. Under his leadership, the university's education unit received approximately sixty million dollars in sponsored research and contracts, and fundraised approximately forty million dollars. It also saw nearly eight million dollars added to the School of Education Scholarship Endowment. This guy has lived and breathed LMU, but he has also done a lot of other stuff. He really has a nurturing and caring spirit and commitment to intercultural education, to cultural diversity, and to the full spectrum of public charter and Catholic schools. He also served as a state commissioner on teacher credentialing for a decade, and he has been a leader in the educational community in, like, a whole host of ways. A Pahara Aspen Education Fellowship in 2015, as a member of the National Board of Directors for Green Dot Public Schools, as a board chair of Los Angeles Teach for America, on the Board of Directors of Loyola High School, as a founding member of Deans for Impact, as past president of the Association of Jesuit Colleges and Universities Education Deans Conference, and as past chair of the American Educational Research Association Special Interest Group on Catholic Education. And then he's got, like, a whole slew of awards, and if I listed them all, he'd get in trouble from Seattle University for not showing up for his new job. So, he's had a tremendous career, and I'll tell you, the folks at LMU have loved him, they continue to love him, they're very happy for his new position, but they're very sad to see him go. There's someone else here who wanted to join me in saying a few words. On behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti, I believe, Steve Zimmer is here with us.
Good morning, friends, Mr. President, council members. On behalf of the mayor, I just wanted to extend his thanks, our thanks, to Dean Shane Martin. And if you could, for a moment, just think about a child that you know and that you care about. And if you can imagine, under Dean Martin's leadership, Loyola Marymount University, every year, is issuing credentials to principals, to teachers, to counselors, to school social workers, from a perspective of social justice, from a perspective of multilingualism, from a perspective of educational equity, that is rare not only in the state of California, but across Los Angeles. And when you consider that LMU graduates in teaching roles, counseling roles, principal roles, superintendent roles, all across the Los Angeles region, in our LAUSD schools, neighboring districts, charter schools, and archdiocese schools, Shane Martin's reach has extended conservatively to over five million kids. It's truly remarkable. I just want to say, on a personal note, that it is rare that anyone in a position of leadership in public education has worked across the, what I would call fictional boundaries, between charter schools and district schools and parochial schools, and really elevated the idea that every child in the city of LA, every family, deserves to have their dreams come true through education. And understanding that access to the best teachers, the best counselors, the best administrators, is really the pivot point and the leverage through which those dreams come true. Shane Martin has changed the life of our city, and changed the lives of literally millions of children, and by, and on behalf of the mayor, Shane, we just want to say thank you.
Where's the cert, Lynn? Thank you, Steve. I gotta say, and I think I speak for a lot of us in this room, I am extremely glad that Mayor Garcetti brought Steve on board as his senior education advisor, a huge benefit to the city of Los Angeles. Good to see you, Steve. So, let me present this to you, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, this is signed by the entire city council, and by the mayor, and the city attorney, and the city comptroller. Colleagues, I give you Dean Shane Martin. We're provost now, right?
Yes.
Provost!
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and especially council member Bonin. Thank you so much for this recognition and this honor. As a second-generation native of Los Angeles, it's been my great privilege and honor to serve this wonderful city through my work at Loyola Marymount University, our work in education, and it's certainly been a team effort these last few years. As you all consider the importance of the future of this great city, we know clearly that education is a key pathway for the future of our city, and the quality of our teachers, counselors, and principals is going to be what helps us move forward or not. And Loyola Marymount University is proud to be a major figure and a partner with the city and with everyone in this great region to help move education forward. It's been a labor of love, it's with great mixed feelings that I leave Los Angeles, but as I'm telling everyone, it's not goodbye, it's just so long for now, and maybe one day I'll be back. Thank you very much for this honor, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for going back. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you all, congratulations. Mr. Rue, are you and Mr. Corretts ready? So the floor is yours.
Today, we come together for our health, as a City Hall family and a city as a whole. The Personnel Department, led by General Manager Wendy Macy, has fostered healthy living right here in City Hall, with their Live Well Wellness Program, through information sessions and events on diets, exercise, sleep, and mental well-being, and not to mention a somewhat competitive walking challenge between all the council offices. And congratulations to Council District Ten, but I do want a rematch. The Personnel Department has been hard at work, building a healthier Los Angeles, and that starts right here. In a time when stress eating seems guaranteed with every news cycle, and donuts seem to be lurking behind every corner, it is on us, as a city council and as a City Hall, to lead by example and take on a healthy lifestyle. Take walking meetings, try salads at homeboy, or come to, come hike in Griffith Park or Runyon Canyon, all in Council District Four. Whatever you do, you can start by implementing healthy habits now, just in time for the summer. Now, I'd like to invite the Chair of the Committee overseeing the Personnel Department, Council Member Paul Corretts, to say a few words.
Well, thank you, David. The city of Los Angeles is committed to supporting the health and well-being of our employees. You may be aware of some of the efforts that have been made, particularly over the last year, to expand the reach of the city's civilian employees' Live Well Wellness Program. Of course, you're all aware of our walking competition, and if we do it again, I promise CD5 will do better than we did the last time. We appreciate all of the hard work done by the Personnel Department and the city's Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee in offering a wide array of campaigns, clinics, and classes to provide education and support to our employees. The Personnel Department and Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee are holding a wellness festival outside City Hall East on June 26th for all city employees, and we encourage everyone to join. Now, to speak more about Wellness Day and the Live Well Program, I'd like to turn this over to our General Manager of the Personnel Department, Wendy Macy.
Thank you, council members. We really do appreciate your, your commitment to wellness at the city of Los Angeles, and to the entire council for all of your support. We are going to have a wellness festival, it's the first event we've had of its kind in many, many years, so again, your support has made this possible. We hope that after you conclude your council business, that you'll also come by. There's going to be a lot of informative, informa, materials for, for all the staff to learn about all of our benefit providers, they'll all be there. But we also want people to have fun, so there are going to be games and a number of engaging activities to help people kind of bridge health, wellness, work-life balance approaches. And so again, we really want to appreciate all of your, your hard work in helping this come together, I want to appreciate my staff, and I actually really want to bring forward several members of the Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee who have worked really hard to make this a reality. We have several members here in attendance, so I'm going to turn it over now to Tony Royster, who's been with the committee for many years.
Thank you. I've been a member of the committee for a number of years, and it's a great pleasure to see this program evolve from nothing into over a hundred-plus activities that have been involved over thirteen thousand employees, and the Personnel Department and this committee has done an outstanding job, and this current event that we're looking to have in the 26 will be one of our largest events, and I want to thank the, the council for this, this recognition, and last but not least, to thank the city employees for their dedicated service... And last but not least, to thank the city employees for their dedicated service to the city constituents in the city of Los Angeles, thank you very much. Excuse me, I want to turn it over to Marlene, she's our Labor Representative on the committee.
Good morning, City Council. Marlene Fonseca, Engineers and Architects Association. As a representative of Labor, from the perspective of the unions and our members, we are more than elated when the city supports programs like Live Well, and events like the upcoming Wellness Festival. We find them invaluable, not only for the health and education that our members receive, but for the sense of teamwork and camaraderie that results. Peers getting healthier together, taking a walk with a coworker or a supervisor, at lunch. I can tell you our members appreciate any time they see support and enthusiasm from management and city leaders like yourselves, and you truly are leading by example. I know many of you champion your own wellness events in your districts, whether it be Councilmember Rue cheering on runners at Griffith Park, same for Councilmember Martinez, who does that at Lake Balboa for her 5K, my councilman, Councilmember Weezer, who's a strong supporter of all wellness events in our community, Councilmembers Bonin and Buscayeno, who might hike with their constituents or bike to work, and of course, your participation in the walking challenge, congratulations, Mr. President. And now this proclamation. Healthier employees with healthier families is a goal both sides share equally. It improves the overall well-being of employees, can improve attendance, increase morale, efficiency, and productivity. Thank you for supporting the well-being of our members. In the end, we all benefit, including this beautiful city that we love and work to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Councilmember Corretts, thank you Wendy Macy, and thank you to everyone in the Personnel Department. And now, in honor of the Wellness Fair on June 26th, we are declaring, June 26th, Live Well Wellness Day in the city of Los Angeles. Wendy, congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
Happy, happy Caribbean Heritage Day to the city of Los Angeles. We're very proud this year to bring to you the Second Annual Caribbean Heritage Day for the city of Los Angeles. We are a city of many, many families and many, many origins here in Los Angeles. The Caribbean community is among one of the strongest of any big city anywhere in the United States. Folks come in the tens of thousands, they cross an entire continent from the eastern port, portion of the Americas, to be here in Los Angeles and to live out the California dream and the Angelino dream. And there are a host of events around the city that commemorates the heritage of Caribbean folks. For those of us who do public service, we all honor the memory of one Congressmember, Mervyn Dimmely, who served on the State Assembly, the State Senate, was first African-American elected to statewide office here in the state of California, and someone that I'm sure we all learned a lot about, a, a lot from over the years. I want to bring to the stage now Dr. Harold Ganga. Dr. Ganga is the, the President of Los Angeles Cultural Festivities. They hold the biggest Caribbean celebration in District 13, along Hollywood Boulevard, so I'll invite him forward to talk about the Caribbean community and the events that'll be happening in the city over the weekend. Dr. Ganga.
Good morning, Honorable Council President Urbesson, honorable councilmembers, consulate honored guests, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to especially thank Honorable Councilmember Marquise Harrison Dawson for his initiative, leadership, and valuable contribution to present and host the Second Annual Caribbean Heritage Day at City Hall. Los Angeles Culture Festival is proud to be a partner with the council members associated with the presentation and celebration of this important public event. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, and embedded in our motto is "One world, one people." We encourage and support unity and diversity in our communities, and focus in bringing all ethnicity, races, sexual orientation, in our multicultural city, together as one people. Our mission is to keep the broader interests of our communities in mind, as we advance our goal of sharing the various traditions, cultures, costume, arts, dances, food, and music of the world as one people, through our Los Angeles Culture Festival and Hollywood Carnival Parade platform. The Los Angeles Culture Festival and Hollywood Carnival Parade would be celebrating our seventh year on June 23rd, with our yearly parade on Hollywood Boulevard and a grand festival in Hollywood. There are people from over 40 countries that participate in this parade and festival. We deeply appreciate the Honorable Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, for his support in making a successful committee and fam, uh, family event each year. It should be noted that cities like London have similar festivals that create revenues of over $650 million, which we see as a good opportunity for the city to partner and capitalize on this sort of events. We are continuing to work hard through our nonprofit to help facilitate and build a more sustainable bond of our multicultural society. We strongly support the city Embrace LA Program, sponsored by Council President Urbesson and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. In fact, we are hosting our second dinner, supporting this event next week.
Thank you.
So this will be our second one. Today, we celebrate Caribbean Heritage Recognition Day. The people of Caribbean Heritage feel very honored by the U.S. Government proclamation, and the recognition, recognition elevated here today by the Honorable Marquise Harris Dawson, Honorable Council President Urbesson, all the honorable council members, is truly beyond the words that we can express in showing our gratitude for your support. A special congratulation to our honorees, Marshall Montano and Jeremy Osorio. These two persons are admired and loved on the world stage for their outstanding contribution to entertainment and our community. In closing, I'd like to invite everyone to join our festival and parade on June 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Price is on the cue, so I'll just give me a signal as to when you...
Yeah, I've got, I've got...
All right.
We'll, we'll do that, thank you, Mr. Price. So we've got an honoree today, Jeremarie Osorio Rivera, better known as Jamie Osorio, is quickly becoming one of the biggest stars to emerge from Puerto Rico in recent years. She stands out in singing and acting and modeling, and started at a very early age. She's transformed herself, like so many folks who come to this city, herself into a successful actress, actress since finishing university in Puerto Rico. She's played many, many roles on musicals and in television shows, and she just starred in a very good piece where she played the late, great icon and diva, Celia Cruz. We have a short video to talk about Jamie's work. One more time for Ms. Osorio, she nailed it.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Very honored to be here with you this morning, I feel very blessed in this moment. I am very grateful for the privilege of celebrating the Caribbean Heritage Second Annual Recognition Day. I am very proud of being Caribbean, mostly Puerto Rican, and very proud of my roots, which are mostly African. Thanks to that, I've been working for more than 11 years, not changing a bit of who I am. I want to thank you, Marquise Harris Dawson, for the opportunity and the Los Angeles Culture Festival Day for, for this moment. I received this as a welcome to the city, and I commit myself to make it better while I'm here. To me, the city full of dreams is, is the same city that lets us know that the ones that really work hard for it and very passionate about it succeed. I would like to dedicate this honor to my beautiful island, Puerto Rico, and, thank you. And also dedicate it to the woman that, from the beginning of her life, she thought that she had everything to lose, because she was poor, because she was black, and because she was a female. It is really sad that 50 years later, we have been, we've been addressing the same subjects, but she fought this revolution through music, and through art, and through passion. And she let me know, and she let everyone know through her music, that she put herself as a vehicle of peace. And she let us know that through her music, that happiness can surpass language and countries. She paved the way for me and for us in so many ways, and so many levels. And I want to say, thank you, Celia Cruz, for allowing me to portray your life, and putting myself also at the service of others. I just want to say that I, I also trust that us adults are the, are the ones that are gonna allow our children to become the leaders of the world. And if we really want world peace, we have to start in, with the peace be, inside ourselves. And that comes from home, and from the attention and the nurture of the soul that we can give to our children. I will continue in this journey, bringing peace and joy through art, through music, in the art scene by portraying characters that inspire others to become better persons, and also through music, through unifying, happy music, that can make us forget all about, all the negative situations that are coming up. So thank you very much for the blessing, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let, let me recognize, uh, Mr. Price, with all of his Caribbean roots.
Yaman. Just want to, Mr. President, thank you, I just want to thank our colleague, Marquise Harris Dawson, for bringing forward this Caribbean Heritage Celebration. We know that the Caribbean diaspora runs deep, in the 8th District, in the 9th District, in the 10th District, and really citywide. We just appreciate the, the unique contributions that individuals have made in our city, in our community, representing the arts, and, and music, and education, and, and, and everything. So, we're just excited to acknowledge your presence as an honoree, and we know that you will continue to be a shining star and a real bright light, as we show that the unique diversity and inclusiveness of our community, in making our city the best one possible. So thank you, and thank you, councilman.
All right, give one more round of applause.
Thank you so much, and thank you to our honorees and guests today. A couple notes, on the South Lawn, we'll be having a mini carnival, here at City Hall, so there'll be dancers, and music, and food, and lots of fun. We invite you to go and partake in that celebration with us out on the South Lawn, for, from now until the rest of the afternoon, until they tell us we gotta go home. So, thank you all so much. And on behalf of the city of LA, all of us here on the city council, and the mayor, and so many others, we want to present you with this certificate of recognition, appreciating your work and contribution to our great city. Dr. Ganga, come on up so we can get a, get a good picture.
If you could walk us through the, the closed session items, we may be able to vote on them now.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to approve the city attorney's recommendation for settlement on Items 20, 21, and 22. The items can be voted on in open session, and the clerk will read the settlement amounts into the record.
Madam Clerk?
Item number 20 is the case entitled, Celsa Orozco Medina versus City of Los Angeles. At all, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in... At all, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. Item 21, in the case entitled "Michael Klein versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $450,000 in settlement. And item number 22, in the case entitled "Jordan Van Pert versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend $175,000 in settlement.
Okay, it doesn't appear that there are any questions on these items, so Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I'd now like to...
Mr. President, sorry to interrupt, but 20 through 22, there is a request to have those items go forth with, sir.
Oh, without objection. I'd like to deal with Item 17 at this point. I do have some cards. Okay, I do have some cards, so if I could get Mr. Herman and Mr. Previn to come forward.
Excuse me, sir, is that for one item?
Yeah, you'll be getting, you'll get the rest of your time, but this will be one minute from it. I just have other people here that I'd like to deal with this, so if they want to leave, they can.
I'm a true believer in...
Give him his one minute, restart his clock.
Thank you, sir, thank you, very generous. God bless you, and Trump. It is a true feeling when I ride my bike, but bicycling off of 5th and 6th Street, anywhere in Los Angeles is not safe. Mobility Plan of 2035 Bicycle Enhancement Network has failed to improve the infrastructure of safe riding. Just this past week, we paid out two settlements simply for a couple hundred thousand dollars. But don't worry, it's your hard-working money, taxpayers, your money. Besides, it's wickedness, it's badness, it's deceit, and God hates lighters. Why? I'll tell you why. Because when you're riding a bike anywhere in Los Angeles, as John Walsh would say, we've become the hit-and-run capital of the world, and you must stop it and improve the infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Previn?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from CD2. This is the Mobility Plan 2035 Bicycle Enhanced Network, and I'm pretty sure that this is where we're investigating adding some bike lanes to Skid Row. Is that the right item? I know it was up in transportation, so I think that's a good idea. I know it's a high-injury network, and, well, I know that this is, and I assume that that is, and certainly Sherman Way is out in our area. We have a number of them, but this makes sense. We want to absolutely curtail the possibility of people getting hurt, and I think some of these lanes make sense in some of these areas. I just hope that when we choose the location, we keep in mind that we were badly sued. There was that group called Keep L.A. Moving versus the City of L.A. that's coming in through the claims process right now, and we'll be seeing something about that soon. So we just want to make sure that we're doing all the things we're supposed to be doing in terms of the notice, the outreach, and doing it fairly and squarely. So thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get Antonio Ramirez, please come forward, followed by Mia Bloom and Gloria Galardo.
This is a wonderful idea, but yet it's not working. We have a high-concentration gridlock. We've got a lot of crazy reckless maniacs out there, but we need to put more focus, protection, and safety on these cyclists. Like it says here, you've got a lot of injury involving these cyclists and also theft of your bikes. Watch out for theft of your bikes. That is on the upscale. And again, we need to find ways to protect these individuals and start citing all the son-of-a-bitches that are cutting them off, walking and just maybe colliding next to them, or in any way threatening them. Start putting police patrols out there to vanguard these cyclists and get every fucking wetback, gangbanger, and all the others who are injuring these cyclists. Let them ride to where they need to go safely, prudently, and with happiness. That's what it was designed for. Thank you.
Thank you, so if I could get... Thank you. If I could get Mia Bloom, Gloria Galardo, I have a card from, it just says LA Can. General, is that you? I don't know. Or is that Steve? Come on. And I think Stephen Bell, if you could prepare. Good to see you.
Hold it here one minute.
Well, yes, at this point, you've got some other cards. We'll let some other people speak. Restart his time. Go ahead, man.
Okay. We are members of LA Cam Ride for Justice Campaign, and for the past year and a half, we have been working to bring bicycle safety lanes in Skid Row along the 5th and 6th corridor. Both streets are the most highest-injury network and two of the most dangerous streets in the city. We also are here today to represent thousands of Angelenos that have signed our petition and has endorsed the campaign. Organizers like L.A. Back Coalition, Circular Lavea, and local merchants and community residents also endorse this. Two weeks ago, the former police chief Beck told the Police Commission that fatal hit-and-run involving cyclists has doubled this year compared to last year, and it's only June. This is just essential and necessary for the next step in the city effort to make the streets safe.
Thank you, thank you. But you know, I was, General Dogan showed me a photo. I saw it last Saturday, so I actually saw the aftermath of accident that was right on 6th Street, I want to say on the south side of the street, half a block, if that, from LA Can's offices. So I hear you, and I'm going to recognize Mr. Weezer in a minute when I take some more public comment. Appreciate all you guys coming down.
And I'd also like to thank Weezer for taking a step forward to recognize the Mobility Plan.
I got you. All right, thanks for coming. If you could just hold on a minute, we'll be voting in a little while. So did I get Stephen Bell, Lindsey Nolan? Are they here? Did Maya come up? Or Mia Bloom? Gloria? Identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Lindsey Nolan, and I'm with the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition. I just want to share our support. We've been partnering with LA Can for some time now. We thank the council member for his support, and we look forward to continue working and partnering with LA Can and the city in bringing safe infrastructure to Skid Row, to serve the people living there and moving through there. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for coming down. So do we have Stephen? Stephen Bell? So anyway, what I'm going to do now, Mr. Weezer, I'm going to kick it over to you, and then we can move into the vote.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I want to thank all the advocates who brought this to our attention. A few years back, we adopted our Mobility Plan that had a bicycle network in there, and we did not include in it all the high-injury network streets that have the opportunity or had qualified to be put in the bicycle network. But through the advocacy of many individuals in Skid Row, they showed us through video and otherwise the dangers that a cyclist goes through whenever they try to go through these, both these streets. And for those of you who are familiar with it, if you either walk through it and/or bicycle through it, you have to navigate heavy bus passages as well as cars that, in my view, simply want to get through there as quickly as possible. We need to slow them down so that all are safe, people who are driving cars, people who are walking, and people who are riding bicycles. So thank you to the advocates who brought this to our attention, and we look forward to including it in the network, but most importantly, eventually implementing it. Thank you very much, Mr. President. That's for my vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, and you know, thank you for your attention. You know, and I have to be honest with you, I was, I had to hustle to get across the street because, I don't know if it's because the cars get there and they automatically speed up, but I can say without pause that that's a tricky stretch, and I'm really glad that you're taking the lead along with all of the advocates to try to make it better. That's the least we can do. With that said, members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Let's bring up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn will get two minutes. And general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's a love fest this morning, I'm very happy. You know, there's the Caltrans item, which of course is a slightly different thing where we're getting, what we're trying to do is onboard some of the proposals for transportation projects, and what we would like to do is get the Prop C kind of ones first because they get reimbursed, and so we want to spend all that money, and then we're rolling. One thing that we absolutely have got to look at that's been some confusion is the Safe Parking L.A. Program, which is a not-for-profit that's helping. You know, the county just got them over onto Hunger and Melrose to add some safe parking spots. The problem I'm seeing is it's 10 spots each facility. So we've got like, I think, 16,000 potential individuals in about 6,500 cars on an evening, average evening in L.A., trying to seek refuge and be, you know, be sheltered, and the car sometimes is the last place to do it. So I know you're also shoving through in the next meeting, 8502, which is an extension of the opportunity to ping people and nail them with citations, the most downtrodden, the people who are, for lack of a better alternative, trying to sleep in the vehicle. So, you know, this gets some popularity in neighborhoods where cars are coming in all over the place, but that's why the big guys like you, sir, and Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson today on Caribbean Day having a little chit-chat right during my remarks should be looking, and I know you have been, you've been duking it out in the high-profile Koreatown case about the Koreatown case about the putting a shelter. So we had a big conversation in Studio City the other night where we put our most arch and non-cooperative team making a motion, so then all of us came out and said, "We're not going to do that because we do want to do something." But you'll see how much they really want to do in my neighborhood. It's not as much as you'd think or like. So, you know, what can I tell you? I think that there would be a great change that could come if we could find private partners who would allow those parking lots to be used. If you, sir, could be a leader on toilets...
Let's give him the one minute.
Sure, sir. You know, the Supreme Court, I think, made a big decision, which I'm not, I haven't fully read it, cards on the table, about internet shopping, but it provoked my interest in the way we like to do refunds for companies, businesses around here, like the one I lost my cool over last week about Sportsman's Landing getting this giant $400,000 kind of waiver of the taxes that they pay. But what we do is we find ways to help businesses who are also doing business elsewhere, like Bloomingfield, remember, Outfront Media got a million-dollar refund, and then I go, "Whoa, how do they get a million-dollar refund? Who overpays their taxes by a million dollars?" And then we explain that it's none of your business because it's privileged. That's got to change, sir, because taxpayer confidentiality is important, but like I was saying the other day, the taxes on our property, assessments on our property are public, and so we should set it up, and Mr. Cashless could help, so that transit occupancy taxes just come right to the city. Then there's no refining the details.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. If I could get Mr. Herman. If we could pull up Mr. Herman on the screen here. Mr. Herman gets his two minutes plus general public comment. Mr. Herman, you have Items 1, 2, 3, 16, 18, and 19.
For many, the word sign language is interpreted in many ways. One in particular is this. Another is more of this. Because that's sign language, another form of sign language is speak no evil, hear no evil. And so what is I to say about the disability designated to execute the proposed amendment? Well, I'm here to say, yes, let's increase it, but by double. We want 120,000. Out of that 78,000, let's double it. Out of the 18,000, 36,000, let's double all this. The more money we spend, the less money in retirement from this city, which has a deficit, a ceiling deficit. Channel 2 News, Channel 9, hurrah. Now, Item 1, Item 2, and Item 3, fuck you. In addition to all this criticism and my rant, I'm going now to Item 19. So I stay on topic. Am I doing well, Ms. Attorney? Thank you. From the board, what is First Amendment? Judge Dean Ferguson showed you what First Amendment is. I too will show you what First Amendment is under the 42 U.S.C. 1983, and my rights as a disabled person to exercise my right freely without threat retaliation, Weezer, without retaliation, Mr. Dawson. So when executing the Articles 2 of Section 2, let's remember what 42 U.S.C. 1983 says. Fuck the both of you.
Okay, give him his one minute.
Romans 1:26-30, I, Herman, that is why God gave them up, to change the natural use of themselves, men and women having homosexuality. Yes, I'm here to scold and criticize, berate, berate, berate it. A fancy word by a black politician who said comportment, comportment. What did Dawson say? The inventor of an injurious thing, Mr. Herman verbally attacked? You're wrong, motherfucker. Stop making up lies. Loesman versus the City of Rivera, 1983 S. Court, meaning Supreme Court, was arrested. 42 U.S.C. 1983, 42:1, 41:41, Fane Lowman, Florida U.S. Supreme Court, docket number for the record, 11626, writ of certiorari, 2012. Fuck you assholes and that fat bitch.
Next speaker, Antonio Ramirez. Mr. Weezer?
Madam President, it's quite unfortunate that we have a situation in this council where every council meeting, practically every committee meeting, our listeners here and people who come to participate in our democracy have to be subject to abuse, verbal or otherwise. I understand the freedom of speech rights of these individuals, but our city attorney, I would ask that they come back and inform this council in closed session as to what we can do to bring more decorum to this council. I just witnessed a father bring his three-year-old child to this council, and once the verbal abuse started, that individual got up and left. Now, we want our young people to participate. If we want our young people to have confidence and faith in our local government, that is not the type of forum we would like to show our young people. There's got to be a better balance. The speakers have rights, as do the listeners and people in the audience. I would ask our city attorney, Madam President, if you could work with Council President Wesson to inform us in closed session as to what type of balance we could bring to these conversations we have in these council meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, and just to let you know, the city attorney did approach us yesterday, or the day before, I should say, with a proposal, and that should be coming to us in closed session in the near future. Mr. Bonin?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Weezer said. We often ask the city attorney to take official notice when they disrupt this meeting for us. I would actually like to ask the city attorney to also take official notice when they deliberately do things to... they deliberately do things to intimidate or harass members of the audience. I was in a Transportation Committee meeting a couple of months ago where a constituent of Mr. Harris-Dawson's was there. They saw that there was a six- or seven-year-old black girl there, and they deliberately used the N-word in her presence, and it was clear it was deliberate. And that stuff is happening more and more, and this isn't about us. This is about the people who come here, and that's what we need to have addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I witnessed the exact same situation you just described in committee with you. Ms. Antonia Ramirez, you're next to speak. You're speaking on Items numbers 16, 18, and 19, and general public comment.
Okay, 16, 18, and 19. Okay. The bulk of the, the bulk of the problem here, Department of Transportation is in shambles. All its projects will not work because the core foundation of the transportation is in dire, is dire straits. Problem is, we have a safety problem. There are no protection avenues to protect the riders, or the passengers, or even the bus riders and the train riders. The harassment, the attacks, the abuse, and the violence is rampant in, all around, not only in the Transportation Department, but the hubs. So, again, it's in shambles. It's going to come crashing down at any time. So, Bonin needs to talk about and address the dire problems, and the death, and the threats, and the assaults that go on, and the gang stalkings that go on there all the time, which he fails to address at every committee meeting that he chairs. Shame on you. And then he has the nerve to hear and harass many of us, and you wonder why? Because it's falling apart. The Department of Transportation, big fat cats, are making millions of dollars while we, as passengers, are being subjected to harassment, attacks, abuse, and not to mention theft, 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 theft. And then the trains and the buses are filthy as hell, and you keep hiring ghetto, 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 wetbacks and ghetto. Hire whites and hire more Asians. Hire people with civility, man. Do your fucking job. And again, it is going to come crashing down. You remember I said that because I'm going to be the first one to come here and say the Department of Transportation and L.A. Dodgers are a mess. They desperately need a cleanup because no one is doing their job, you lazy asses. Get off and do your job. Okay, now, next one.
You have your general one minute for general public comment, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am. Yesterday, June 21st, 18, at about 8:00 p.m., an older white male who served in the United States Marine Corps for eight years was honorably discharged and was at the Music Center Grand Park Bathroom, Block 4, shaving and washing himself because he is homeless as well, when without provocation, he was grabbed by two male, black-ass motherfucking felons, and they threw him up against the wall and started pumping brute force against him, while he tried to defend himself. They knew he was military, so they sent two black-skinned real pussy motherfuckers, and probably junkies, pimps, et cetera. And again, he is, he is a law-abiding, United States military veteran, but let me tell you, black-ass motherfuckers, you don't fuck with a United States military veteran, and that includes the wetbacks and the gangbangers that these blacks listen to. They are siding with a, with a Latino wetbacks and gangbangers who work with the Mexican mafia out of Olvera Street in La Placita. Payback is a bitch. It all comes back.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you very much. You have a good weekend. That concludes cards on multiple items. We're going to go ahead and vote on some items. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on Item 1 through 3. Open the roll, 1 through 3. You want to, okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on Items 16, 18, and 19. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Madam Clerk, there is a, there is a request for an urgent forthwith on Item number 18, so we, that will take up two votes. Just go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
So, let's go ahead, Madam Clerk. I'd like to recess our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Can you go ahead and call for the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present, and accord, Madam President. Items 23 and 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. Madam President, amendments for Item 23 and 24 has been posted and circulated and is now before council.
And, Madam President, the amendments for Item 23 and 24 were technical corrections to council instructions, and public comment has been satisfied on those items.
Okay, very well. I believe Mr. Harris-Dawson wants to speak on one of the items, Item 24.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. The Councilman Rue entered a amendment which we are supportive of around 8502. We have a number of amendments that we want to consider in committee when we look to sharpen up 8502 in the coming months, so we'll ask that amendment be sent to committee, and 24 be, 24A be sent to committee.
Item 24B be sent back to committee.
24A.
24A. Very well. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Mr. Herman, stop disrupting this meeting. I'm going to ask you to leave.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Herman, thank you very much. Can you, Ms., Sergeant, can you please escort Mr. Herman out of our meeting? He continues to disrupt the meeting. He's speaking and interrupting the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Madam City Attorney, can you please note for the record that Mr. Herman continues to disrupt our council meeting as he's exiting our room?
Yes, Madam President. For the record, in case the cameras can't catch this, Mr. Herman is continuing to shout and scream as he's exiting the room and continues to disrupt this meeting.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to the next items, Madam Clerk.
Items 25 and 26 are closed-session items.
Madam President, the recommendation is to approve the city attorney's recommendation for settlement on Items 25 and 26. The items can be voted on in open session, and the clerk will read the settlement amounts into the record.
Why don't we go ahead and vote first?
Madam President, may I announce the amounts of the settlements? Item number 25 is the case entitled Nick Phoenix Etol versus City of Los Angeles Etol. There is a recommendation to expend $700,000 in settlement. Item 26 is in the case entitled Brian O'Hare versus City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
See, those items pass. There is a request to send all items forthwith. Without objection, that will be the order. Let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting, and we turn to our regular meeting, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, Item 27 is before council as well as general public comment.
Item 7? Okay, let's go ahead and take up Item number 7. I just want to say a few words about this item. I'd like to first take a moment and thank my colleagues who sit on the Housing Committee for approving this important item. I especially want to applaud our Housing Community Investment Department, H. Sid. In particular, Mr. Cervantes, Abigail Marcus, Curtis Watson, the entire H. Sid team. I think for those of you who know how passionate I am about human trafficking issues, by supporting and approving this item, members, we are proposing a contract that would allow the creation of the first-ever Human Trafficking Shelter Operations Program, led by an organization that has a lot of history in dealing with issues of human trafficking. I think the city as a whole has done everything it can to provide services and funding and enforcement to human trafficking victims. The last piece that we need to address is really the need to house our victims who have been caught in these horrible, horrible situations where they've been beaten, threatened, and trafficked for most of their lives. On any given day, we have almost 10,000 victims being trafficked through our city, and I know it's a very small amount, but I think it's headed in the right direction to continue to do everything we can to house and provide the needed shelter for human trafficking victims. I want to thank all of you who sit on the Housing Committee for approving this item, and I ask for an I vote. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's go ahead and take some general public comment cards. Stephanie Bell, Stefan Bell, I'm sorry. Anyone here by that last name, Bell? Lawrence Pearl Murder, followed by Jacqueline Richardson, and Eric Spillman. Go ahead.
Good evening. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Still morning.
The reason why I'm doing this is because I know there's a way we could figure out a way to help all the homeless people who are out here in Los Angeles and the state of California. We could open all the jails that we have closed up into homeless shelters, and we could do community gardens to help support, to bring them a safer being. They'll be able to feel at home. They'll be able to have an address where they claim as their own, and we all could do it as a team, as a family. All of us could be whole, and we could help all the homeless people get jobs and feel right at home again. I think, I thank everybody for their support.
Sir, the next speaker is Jacqueline Richardson, followed by Eric Spillman.
I wonder if all of you have had the privilege of going to a train station here in this area, not outside the area, but here in this area, not too far away from here. Have you had that privilege? And if you have had the privilege, have you noticed how far down the platform where the trains leave? Have you noticed that? I'm not talking about anything outside this area, just in this immediate area, where you get on the train and you have to, where the platform is located, how far down it is. I just wanted to ask you that one question.
Ms. Richardson, have a good weekend. Next speaker is Eric Spillman. Anyone here by that name, Eric Spillman? Seeing none. That concludes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting referral.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to invite you all, and still we're in celebration of Pride Month. We are hosting at Pacoima City Hall, Raising Zoe, which is a screening that we are having along with the panel in concert with our Human Relations Commission. So, that's tomorrow at 3:00, and I invite everybody to join us at Pacoima City Hall. Also, I know Councilwoman, you and I are both going to be-
We're hosting Siclavia in the Valley.
Siclavia in the Valley, in the Great 18, so we'd like to invite all of you to come out to Panorama City. I know we're doing our kickoff.
We're going to kick it off in Panorama City at about 8:00, 8:30 on Sunday morning, and then we're going to conclude at Pacoima City Hall with even more celebrations. So, we're going to go up Van Nuys Boulevard. Everyone's welcome to join us.
Right, but we're going to, we're going to close down Siclavia, right? We're having an after-party at Pacoima City Hall. We're going to be screening Breakin'. You're welcome, Marquise. Everybody was asking me how I came up with Breakin'. You know, everyone, bring your own cardboard. I know for those of us who are of the same age, I used to do my own share of breakdancing, and, and so we'd like to invite everybody out. I know many of my staff weren't really quite sure about the movie when I suggested it, but we've got the Great 18ers that are also going to be performing and teaching a lot of our kids about the great nostalgic performance of breakdancing as well. So, we would like to bring everybody out to come out and see Breakin'. We've got music. We've got food trucks. It's going to be a great time to close out Siclavia in Pacoima, so we invite you all to join us. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Seeing none, if we can please rise for adjourned motions. Are there any adjourned motions, Mr. Weezer?
The audience could stand, please. Thank you. And colleagues, I wish to adjourn in memory of Victor Rubio, a great father, husband, grandfather, coach to many, friend, leader, and extraordinary human being. He was also my baseball coach at Silesian High School. Victor Rubio was born in Los Angeles on May 8th, 1945. He was raised on Opal Street in Bull Heights and attended Bishop Morris Silesian High School, my alma mater, and he graduated there in 1964. He met the love of his wife, Patricia, at Resurrection Church in Bull Heights as part of a teen club. They were married on August 13th, 1966. Victor and Pat had their oldest daughter, Michelle Rubio, in 1968. Michelle is here with us today. She works as a management analyst for the Los Angeles Police Department. Their second daughter, Veronica, was born in 1971, and their youngest son, Victor Jr., followed in 1980. Victor Rubio raised his family in the same house he grew up in, in Opal Street, where he remained for the entire, for his entire life. Coach Rubio, as he was known around the community, returned to Silesian to become the football coach for 16 years from 1985 to 2001. Before that, he coached at Resurrection from 1976 to 1985. But more than a coach, Victor Rubio inspired and mentored countless young men on and off the field. Those who had the pleasure to know him and grow up through his life lessons that team participation provide, they all are better for it and have mentioned it after his passing. Victor was a dedicated family man who loved to take his family on local trips to Southern California locations like Santa Barbara, Solvang, or the beach. Together, the Rubios enjoyed each other's companies, and on occasion, enjoyed a good water fight. Victor Rubio looked, loved to cook, to listen to oldies, drink a cold Michelob, watch baseball and football, and most importantly, he absolutely loved coaching football at Silesian High School. He will be part of a Mustang family and the Bull Heights family. He will be remembered as one of our neighborhood treasures. My deepest condolences to his wife, Pat, his daughters, Michelle and Veronica, his son, Victor, three granddaughters, what great, great-granddaughter, and the countless lives he touched. He will be greatly missed, and may he rest in peace. And if I could also add that as someone who grew up in the neighborhood of Bull Heights, we always appreciate people who have given of their lives to young people in the neighborhood, and Victor did that for us. He loved football. He loved baseball. And I recall the turns of the baseball field, those little things he did to advise us, tell us, not so much only about how to pick up a ground ball and how to catch a ball and how to swing, but things he advised you that at the time you probably don't know what they mean, but later on in life, you look back, and it's great advice. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. That was beautiful. Our condolences to you and your family. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great weekend.